Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the delayed start of Eastern School Committee Meeting of Thursday, June 20th, 2024. This meeting will be conducted, is being conducted in a hybrid format, where attendance by school committee members may be in person or remote, and both types of attendance shall count toward quorum. This meeting will be broadcast live on ECAT after some technical difficulties are resolved. It's currently being broadcast and recorded via Zoom. We have Lauren Loomis attending remotely. Lauren, can you just confirm that you can hear us and we can hear you?
I can hear you.
Great.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes. And then have Nancy DeLuca and Jen Starr attending in person. This meeting is open to the public. If any members of the public who are attending in person would like to make comments during our public comment period, you will be invited to do so and will be required to state your name and address before beginning your promise. And with that, while ECAT is working out some technical broadcast difficulties, I'm going to make a motion to move item executive thirteen, item thirteen, which is an executive session, up to the first item on the agenda. So can I get a, I'll make that motion. So can I get a second on moving item thirteen up on the agenda?
Second, Luca.
Roll call vote?
Luca, yes.
Starr, yes?
Loomis, yes.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I make a motion to enter into executive session to return to open session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A subsection 21A3 to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for the Eastern Educators Association Units A, B, and Power Professionals and Southeastern Public Associations via Secretarial Custodian and Food Service Unions, units, and pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A subsection 21A7 to comply with open meeting law to review minutes of prior executive sessions from May 6th, May 23rd, and May 28th, 2024. In my opinion, having these discussions in open session would be detrimental to the bargaining position of the school committee. Can I get a second?
Second, Loomis.
Okay. Roll call vote?
Luca, yes.
Starr, yes?
Loomis, yes.
Okay, all right. So anybody watching on or attempting to watch on ECAT or watching on ECAT later, thank you for your patience, and we will return shortly or in a bit.
All right, so our next item on the agenda is a vote to accept some donations, which is a great agenda item. So Dr. Cabral?
Thank you, and we appreciate the patience for our audience who's here for sharing this, these donations with us. The first is Tricia Helen, who's here representing the Richardson Olmstead PTA, and would like to invite you to speak about the donation that the PTA is looking to make to Richardson Olmstead. Thank you.
Should I check his app right now?
Just like, it should be good.
All right. My name is Tricia Helen. I'm the treasurer of the Richardson Olmstead PTA. And this is our second donation we would like to make for the playground. We had a fun run over the phone, and we raised a lot of money, and we'd like to donate $20,000.
Wow.
Excellent.
That's fantastic.
Ooh, just so the, give a brief little update to the public on that. We've been doing the Richardson Olmstead Playground in two phases. First is the north, what we call the north playground, that was completed, all except some surfacing that was very weather dependent, and so that's being actually finished right now. So the north playground is completed. The PTA made a donation to that playground as well. So that is being closed out, and now the south playground is under construction. And the south playground is anticipated again to have a similar timeline, hopefully be done by the winter, but there may be some weather dependent things that keep it from being done. So the $20,000 is extremely helpful. We appreciate it. It's a great investment right back into the school, so it certainly makes a lot of sense for the PTA to commit that money. We know it's a lot of work for the PTA to raise that money, and so we are very thankful for that, and we'll make sure it is, we are on a quick turnaround though, just because we're at the end of the fiscal year. So our director is here of finance. She can work with getting that transferred in as soon as possible, and then we'll spend it right away because we're working on it right now. That way it will all be set for the fiscal year. So on behalf of the kids, really, thank you so much for that donation.
Great.
Thank you.
They're excited for it.
Any comments from school committee members? And Lauren and Lynn, I don't know if you, could you hear the amount from Tricia? You could hear that? Okay, all right, great.
Yes.
Just thank you very much. We really appreciate it.
Absolutely. Lauren, any comments? We can hear you, so if you want to.
Yeah, so thank you, Tricia, for sticking around and for this very generous donation. I know that the, the students of RO will be very appreciative of it, and I have one right here. It's very exciting.
And Tricia, I don't know if you have some RO feedback about the north playground so far, what the, what the kids have experienced with that playground as opposed to the blacktop that they had before?
Yeah, no, my son is going into fifth grade, and he loves it, absolutely. Yeah, I think it's been a huge, a huge addition to recess for them. I don't think there was much to do before, so this has been, this has been great. He loves it, and he's very excited for the second side, too.
That is awesome. So thankful, I think my, I was, I was in your role when my twenty-year-old was at RO.
I think you're still in some of the papers.
I, I may still be, you can remove me, we'll, we'll work that out. So I remember, I remember when we first introduced the fun run and realized how, how great fundraising opportunity was and setting aside money, you know, to, to work on a future playground improvement plan, which we had nothing in mind, like the scale that's there. You know, I think we were looking for like some hopscotch and maybe a brass or something. But it's, it's been, it's been an improvement plan that has been in the works and in the making for a very long time with just this endless stream of support from the PTA and then from all of the students and their families who participate in the run and support it. So thank you to the PTA for organizing it, for keeping this as one of the many great things you guys spend money on, and, and just amazing. So yay, excited. All right, so with that, I, would somebody like to make a motion to accept the $20,000 donation from the RO PTA for the south playground at Richardson Olmstead?
So moved, Loomis?
Second, Luca.
Roll call vote?
Luca, yes.
Starr, yes?
Loomis, yes.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Helen.
Thank you.
All right, and then there's a second donation?
Yes, so Livia Ramos, who is our IT Director, has been working very hard to secure technology in any way possible, including grants. She's working on a cybersecurity grant right now that, that she was able to bring in, but she also found a program called Computers for Learning, which is made up of educational institutions and nonprofit organizations. They view and select computers that are being discarded by federal agencies but are still in good working order. The Technology Department has put in for two bundles of computers. One was not approved yet, but one was approved. These are Apple products, which we are primarily investing in Chromebooks in the district. That's basically our, our price point at this, at this point. But we do have some departments, particularly in the high school, that require a higher level of graphics, sound cards, and so forth, and the Apple products do provide that. She was able to secure eight devices that are valued at over $14,000. We just have to pay for shipping. So they are going to be used right now for the art department and the marketing department at OA. Livia continues to look for more products. She puts in an application every time she sees something that's available that is suitable for our purposes and what has been expressed from the schools that they're looking for to try to augment our procurement plan and what we receive from capital for technology. So that is a, it sounds like a small number of devices, but it, in, in two classes, in being able to use it in both classes, it's $14,000 we didn't have for technology. So we're going to continue to graciously solicit hand-me-downs from the federal government whenever we can and appreciate that opportunity, and so this is a vote for your acceptance.
All right, great. Any comments from school committee members?
Quite an opportunity.
Okay, all right, great.
Sounds wonderful.
Awesome, well, thank you to Ms. Ramos for, for, for pursuing that among all of the rest of the wonderful services she provides to the district. So then can I get a motion to accept the donation of eight devices from the Computers for Learning Program for Oliver Ames?
So moved, Luca, I'm moving.
Can I get a second?
Second, Loomis.
Roll call vote?
Luca, yes.
Starr, yes?
Loomis, yes.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Cabral. Excellent. Okay, so next up is a discussion and possible vote to approve pay and ride, Dr. Cabral.
Okay, so at our last meeting, we discussed a couple of requests to consider for pay and ride. Now, I know that there was a lot of interest in this, and so I don't necessarily presume you're going to vote on any or even any parts. It's certainly probably not all of it tonight, but I wanted to provide updated information. Just to recap, kind of quickly, we currently, in, in the state of Massachusetts, we need to provide free transportation over two miles to any student grades, up to and including grade six. After that, we're not required to transport students. Obviously, that presents a significant hardship for people. We want to encourage kids to come to school. We want to try to provide free transportation for over two miles for every student. We've actually gone beyond that, when we had a little bit more physical capacity, in that we transport all students two miles and over for free, excuse me. We transport all students in grades three through twelve, who live one and a half miles away and more. So we give an extra half of a mile for free. And we have a pay and ride program under one and a half miles. If they would like to take the bus, they can select to, and there's a pay and ride cost. We excluded, several years ago, we excluded pre-K and two from having to pay at all because we did not want to encourage families or children to walk in the vicinity of center school in Moro Hall because they were on very busy roads. Because of that, to make it equitable, we didn't charge for any pre-K to two students. We are in a different situation geographically and financially, and so for your consideration, we brought forward a few things, and then I was asked for some information, and I have some of that information. So, things to consider. First, we wanted to have you consider including pre-K through, excuse me, kindergarten through grade two for pay and ride. Second, which can be an and/or, have the limit go to two miles instead of one and a half miles. So anyone who lives less than two miles would have to pay for pay and ride as opposed to one and a half miles, have to pay for pay and ride. The third was to reconsider the rates. Right now, it's $175 per the year for a student. We wanted to consider increasing that to 200. The second student was 150, increase it to 175. Third student was 125, increase it to 150. Family maximum was 450, and we wanted to consider increasing it to 525. And of course, anyone who qualifies for free and reduced lunch has a different payment option or a different payment plan where, for example, if they qualify for free, they don't pay anything. That goes with anything that we do, whether it's resources, materials, field trips, anything that's part of the curriculum, and certainly this is part of that, sports activities. So it would fall under that as well for anyone that had financial hardship. Questions that we were asked about included the maps to see what is, where does two miles go as opposed to one mile? So I did provide that as an email to you. I didn't have it as maps because it really didn't, it didn't print well, but the company provided, Lucini, provided us with a one mile, a one and a half mile, and a two mile for all four schools. So you'll be able to see geographically where that is. In addition, you have this pivot chart that shows how many students that we're aware of currently in a zero to one and a half mile radius from their school, in a one and a half to two mile radius. So that would be the extra students that would be potentially adding to pay and ride, and then two miles or more. So the two miles and more is likely not going to change, right? What we're looking at is the one and a half to two miles. Now, for grades one and two, we already transport all those students for free. We, I know one of the concerns was that students don't typically know if there's space on a bus until October. We haven't had that issue with grades one and two, and we transport all the kids. If anything, we're going to have maybe less children if they don't want to do the pay and ride because they were going for free. So we don't expect an increase to those populations. In grades three, four, and five, again, from grades one to five, we actually can triple the students in the seats, so the chances that there are going to be issues with transportation are probably low. I did follow up with the manager that does the scheduling, and she did say that in past years, she had, anyone that has expressed an interest in being on the bus for pay and ride has been placed before school started. It's when they show up to school and say they want to be placed that they sometimes have to wait for ridership. So if you're looking at this pivot chart, this pivot table, if you look at the center row, and then the columns, grades three, four, and five, you can see there are about eighty-three children that would fall between one and a half to two miles that are now transported for free, that may or may not want to do pay and ride. Again, we don't know, if anything, it would probably be a reduction, but even if we had eighty-three more students, we have seventeen buses that are going through these two miles to get to school, you're potentially, I mean, potentially that could be five, six, eight kids a bus. So we don't anticipate a huge problem as long as we know before school starts. Now, with grades six to twelve, those are always overpopulated. They do that on purpose because we have a lot of kids over two miles that say they're going to take the bus and then never take the bus. Or they start taking the bus, and then they have a sibling that starts driving, or a neighbor that starts driving, or they start participating in an after-school activity. And so grades six through twelve traditionally do get ironed out for pay and ride in sometime in October. Because, and we aren't, again, we aren't required to transport students seven to twelve for free over two miles, but that is our goal, and pay and ride would be secondary to that.
Under two miles, right?
Under two miles. If, if you move it from one and a half to two, then it would be under two miles, yes. So there are like, there are three components here, basically. One is changing the rate, two is changing the radius, and three is the inclusion of grades K to two. They could be done independent of one another, all together, but that's what we're asking you to consider. And of course, we want to notify parents as soon as possible so that we can help them make appropriate plans for transporting their children or for before-school care.
I am not seeing the pivot table. Where can I find that?
I, I brought it. I apologize. I didn't know you were going to be remote. Well, I will send that to you.
Sorry. So.
I've been like, looking everywhere.
No, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah. So, so Lauren, so just to give you some, I'll give you some highlights. So miles, zero to one and a half, there are a total of 654 kids. From one and a half to two is 355, and two or more is 2,200. So with the, the population we're talking about is, you know, in terms of changing the radius, is that, is that 355? And of that, the numbers in each of the lower grades are quite small. So it's like ten in kindergarten, twenty-one in first grade, twenty-four in second grade, twenty-nine in third grade, twenty-one in fourth grade, and thirty-three in fifth grade. And then the, the six through twelve range is anywhere from nineteen to thirty-seven kids per grade. So I don't know if that's helpful context.
Is there any way someone could text it to me, or that's?
Yes, I'm going to email it to you, absolutely.
Can I take a picture of it?
I, I emailed it to all, I'll be.
It's an email right now?
She's going to try to email it now from her.
Okay, or, or if someone could just take a picture of it, and she's texting it to me, it's fine, too. Or e, or email it, the picture.
Nancy and I wrote all over ours.
Yeah, it's kind of small.
What?
Nancy and I wrote all over ours. So hold on, I'll send you, I'll send you two pictures, kind of piece them together.
I apologize, Lauren.
No, it's my fault, sorry.
No, it's not. I didn't, I didn't realize you weren't going to.
Yeah, neither did I.
No, it's, and it's not even, that's fine. That's not your fault at all.
Come on, focus, focus. Sorry, it's a little blurry. All right, should be coming right to you.
Okay, thanks, Jen.
You're welcome.
It's not moving. I believe that's all the information that was asked for. If there's something else, I want to make sure I get that for you, or if there's something new that maybe this is making you think of, I can get that, too.
Yeah, I, I recall from the last discussion that Kelly had brought up the certainty with, especially the younger students, so that parents could adequately plan their transportation and childcare. So I don't know if you had a chance to watch that discussion?
Oh, I did, I watched it.
Okay, um, and so it sounds like, it, it sounds like, again, where, you know, we wouldn't be adding any, you know, the, the K to two numbers wouldn't, wouldn't increase over what, because they're all getting transported for free anyway, so right now, so anybody who wants.
Right, there's a, there's an assumption there, of course, that the students that are able to take it for free now, who aren't, won't change their mind and want to pay to do it, obviously, that could, we don't know.
Yeah, and enrollment numbers fluctuate.
We don't know. But we never know. We never can get a confirmation from people unless they're going to pay for it.
Yes, so could we, if we, if we did vote for the, for, you know, all of the changes, particularly the radius and the, the K to two, or, or maybe at least like for, for K to five, could we communicate that if you commit by X date and, you know, make your payment, or however we do payments or whatever, you know, you will, you know, or respond by X date to guarantee a spot at the start of the school year? That would be something we could do.
Yes.
Okay, so I think, I think that addressed the big concern that Kelly had raised.
Lauren, do you have any, any recollection of, of any of the other kind of sticking points for the discussion?
So a sticking point for me is that we're not, we're not giving, I, I understand that we want to save money, and I support it, but I just don't think that we're giving enough time to socialize it. And I would love for this to be something that we revisit for next year, and I know that, again, I know it's to save money, and I, you know, if maybe we can increase fees in other places, like for rentals and, and whatever. I just would like more time to communicate this out to families for the fall, before the fall. So I, I would like to table it.
Okay, would you be, would you be comfortable with voting on the fee increases, which to me seem less disruptive and more, you know, that's, to me, that seems like something that's maybe a little bit easier to absorb in a short period of time than, like, so for the, if we, if we were to keep the pay and ride program as is, in terms of, you know, who, who it would apply to, but increase the rate by $25 per student, i- is that something you would consider, or would you want to push back the whole proposal?
I think it's a, a large sum of money to impose on families when they weren't expecting it, but if it's already, if it's the program that we already have in place right now and that's not changing, just to increase $25 per child, per student, that's what you're saying, right?
Yeah, because it's been many years since we increased the rate.
Right.
Yeah.
I would be okay with that.
The other thing I'd like to add in, Lauren, especially, if you, if you survey the towns around us immediately, they've been doing this pay thing for a long time, and actually probably a lot more money than our kids are paying. Plus, for years, we've held it at a mile and a half. I, you know, all I can picture is the, the pickup lines are going to doubly worse in the afternoon or the morning, I don't know. But I don't, I don't think this is off the wall, but, and, and when, if you look at those numbers, the one and a half to two, you're talking, basically, if you consider that some of those juniors and seniors are going to be driving, you're only, you're talking about 300 students. So is it that many more? Not really, with seventeen buses, it's not a lot of kids, so. I don't know. I just, I just feel like we have held the line for a long time, even in tough budgets, and I think at this point where we're scrimping and scratching and saving to get, you know, education done, get them transported. I, I wish everybody could be free, you know, and have a bus, and, and you know what? It's part of bringing up a kid. You go through it with daycare when they're babies, you go through it with, you know, summer camps and things like that. You decide what you want to pay, and if you, you figure out a way, whether it's with your friends, family, you know, it takes a village for all these kids to get through, so I, I'm in favor of just going all three of these things tonight, but that's up to you.
Yeah, so looking at this, so we are, we are only responsible, right, legally bound for this last row, grades one through six.
Right, yes.
It's like a thousand students, and we're transporting for free, many more than that, and have, have for a long time. A, a, and again, at, at an expense that we really can't sustain, given how much our transportation costs have gone up.
We could get to a point where we need to have less buses, which means we wouldn't be able to provide pay and ride as an option. That's what other districts do, they do the two and up, and that's it.
And do they charge for six to twelve?
Most do not.
They just don't.
No, what some do, Brockton years, excuse me, Fall River years back, just didn't provide transportation, seven to twelve, and they gave free and lunch students public transportation tickets. We don't have that option here, but that is, that's, that's an equity issue.
Right.
No knock to the city, but that is definitely an equity issue, particularly in Eastern, where we don't have public transportation.
Yeah, and we don't have neighborhood schools spread out.
It disadvantages students that don't have a car.
Yeah.
Or someone at home that can bring them to. or someone at home that can bring them to school, um, so it is something we're really trying to maintain.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I just, I do want to put that out there, that while it's not this year, it is possible, you know, to go through this whole exercise and ultimately determine, we really can't maintain two miles and below and we lose that as an offering. That's potential, a potential future, I just don't want that to be catching anybody offhand. If we're losing money on that, then it's gonna be a very difficult thing to maintain.
And just to be clear, the, the pay and ride does not actually cover the cost
No.
of transporting those students by any stretch.
No.
Yeah, so it's still, oh, something that the district is still heavily supplementing
Mm-hmm.
transportation for students that we are not legally bound to transport, even if they're paying.
Which we all want to do.
Yeah.
There's no question about that, I, I.
Yeah, like step one for education, you gotta get to school.
Exactly, yes, yep.
Okay. Alright, um.
So, on the maps, the green is the area that is the, the one mile, one and a half, two mile.
Correct.
Oh, that's a lot of maps.
The one mile, I think, is not necessary. If you look at one and a half and two, that's really.
So I'm looking at the two, um, from R O, but they're all basically the same. And it goes as far, like, students would be walking on Bay Road. And there's no sidewalks there.
Yeah.
Not everyone's gonna be able to get a ride.
Then they'd have the option to pay.
Yeah, alright, um. Thoughts on if we want to vote tonight? I mean, there are only three of us, it, I'm, I'm, I don't wanna suppose, but I'm, uh, Lauren, I'm seeing, yeah, I'm, I'm seeing, I'm assuming your vote, or you can tell us, your vote would be a no. So we wouldn't have, um, a majority. Actually, I don't even know how that works.
I know. Does it work? We can?
Yeah.
Did you, if, do you want to just do the rate, like you said, do the rate tonight?
Yeah, I, I guess if we could vote on that, then we could at least communicate that out.
Right, and discuss this a little more.
This one at the, at the next one.
Yep.
Okay, okay, um. Okay, so then, um. I, so I make a motion to approve increasing the cost of each pay and ride option. Uh, so first student from one seventy, by twenty-five dollars, so for a student, one seventy-five to two hundred, second, one fifty to one seventy-five, third, one twenty-five to one fifty, and per family maximum to five twenty-five. Um, and to, um, defer discussion on, uh, additional, on the, yeah, on the additional, um, uh, considerations to a future date.
DeLuca, second?
Alright, that was long. Roll call vote.
DeLuca, yes.
Star, yes.
Lomas, yes.
Alright, thank you. Um, so next up is, uh, a vote to approve the school improvement plans. We have Oliver Ames and Easton Middle School and we can head out to the seats for presentations.
Okay, Principal Carol, we'll have him get set up. He will go first for, uh, Easton Middle School's school improvement plan. And then.
Lauren, as, Emily, as we sort of rotate around, if you can't hear presenters, please just jump in and let us know and we'll figure, maybe we'll do the laptop. I'm not quite sure where the audio is coming from right now, it's just coming from the laptop.
Sounds good.
I like it.
Uh, first, before we get started, I just want to thank, uh, all the members of our school council at the middle school. Uh, we have, uh, teachers and parents that helped us throughout the year as well as a community member. I'm not gonna, uh, go through everybody that's on the slide, uh, but I do want to thank them for all their help this year. And, uh, jumping right into the goals, uh, one of our, one of our goals that we have moving forward, and this is a goal that's actually continued um, from years past, from the last two years, um, and it's a goal that's built around, uh, student behavior, particularly bullying and cyberbullying. Um, the goal is by June two, twenty twenty-six, Easton Middle School will establish a new school-wide approach to improve the behavior of all students, reducing student behaviors in the areas of bullying and cyberbullying by ten percent as measured in the two thousand, uh, twenty-three, which will now be the two thousand twenty-five, will be the next assessment, uh, youth health risk survey. Um, you can go to the, uh, the next slide. The data behind, uh, the reason for this, uh, for this goal, uh, we've had, uh, we have, uh, historic data for bullying going back to our first student health risk survey. That was in two thousand and fifteen. At that time, we had, uh, you know, we had high bullying numbers, we felt at thirty-five percent. Um, the cyberbullying numbers were much lower at nineteen percent. Uh, but that's something as more and more middle schoolers tend to come to us having cell phones, we've seen a steady increase in those problems, uh, over the years. Now, uh, you can see some of the numbers that are up there. In two thousand and nineteen, our numbers were at the lowest that they'd ever been, uh, nineteen percent with bullying and thirteen percent, uh, at cyberbullying, and that is reported by our seventh and eighth grade students. So we were very happy about those numbers. Then the pandemic hit, and you can see coming out of the pandemic, the numbers jumped up again in twenty-one, uh, at thirty-two percent, and a significant jump in cyberbullying at, uh, twenty-six percent in twenty-one. Um, we had put some of these initiatives in place to try to make an impact on these numbers, but as you can tell, it didn't impact it enough. We saw a slight reduction, uh, in cyberbullying numbers, uh, basic bullying stayed relatively the same, reduced a little bit, but, um, we were unhappy with those numbers. What we did was we, we increased the number of action strategies that we were doing, some of the things that we're doing that we're doing well. We wanted to continue, but we wanted to add more things, uh, to impact student behaviors. Now, some of the things that we're doing in the action strategies, uh, moving forward over the next two years with this goal, um, we're gonna continue having grade-level summer reading program that targets the theme of anti-bullying. That's something that we've done over the last two years. We've shifted to have, uh, different books at each grade level, um, but we do, we are gonna continue with that because that is something we think that is having a positive impact with the students. We're gonna establish this year and implement, uh, a new MTSS or, uh, a positive behavioral, uh, intervention support in place. Uh, that's something to help reduce behaviors, um, that can be done with tier-one instruction. So we want to really support the teachers, we want to provide training, we want to get into the classrooms and provide better ways to address student behaviors in the classroom and give the teachers they tool, the tools they need to adjust to what is a changing, you know, student that we're seeing. Um, so that's something that we are planning on doing. We also want to create and implement units focused on character development and social emotional learning. That's something that our guidance, uh, guidance counselors, uh, will do on their own, where they will create these units and then will go into the classrooms and they will teach specific character development, uh, units and lessons to the students. We also want to identify and train student leaders. This is something that we've continued, um, that we've done in the past, we're gonna continue this. Where we train, uh, students that we target as seventh and eighth grade leaders, send them into the classroom in grade six and even the lower grades to talk to the students about respect and civility and remind them of, and reinforce the core values of the school. Uh, another area that we want to, uh, that we want to make an impact, or another action strategy that we have is to incorporate into the focus period programming materials that'll assist the teachers by providing them, uh, resources to help facilitate guided discussions during focus period on helpful topics that build a more inclusive school community. It's things that we can do in those focus periods that build character, that, uh, revolve around character development. When different things are coming up within the school, we want to give the teachers the resources and, and the way that they can then, um, give that to the students. And that's another action strategy that we have. We also want to create a parent presentation. Now, every year, we have different presentations that we do for back-to-school night. We have three different back-to-school nights, one per grade. Um, this year, um, at the start of our back-to-school night, we're gonna have all the parents come to the auditorium, um, and we're gonna present to them as a school before they go to breakout sessions with the teams. So the idea is when we have the parents at the very beginning of the school year to be very clear about expectations, be very clear about what is or isn't bullying, um, talk to the parents about how we handle student behaviors, what are typical behaviors we see at the middle school level. Uh, but that's something that we want to do right at the very beginning of the school year, something right in September, so we're already working on that. Um, we are, we were creating a targeted professional development with a focus on restorative practices uh, and trauma-informed decision-making as well. That's training that we'll be receiving this year. We have, uh, teachers that are gonna be, uh, going through a training, I believe. We have a train-the-trainer model with thirty teachers that are going to be selected to go through this training program, more than enough to have one teacher on every team. Uh, so that makes it really easy to go back and then in team meetings to share out the information that you're learning to help, uh, incorporate that into your tier-one interventions with students. Uh, we're also gonna research dynamic anti-bullying assemblies. We want to hold one for each grade level this year. Um, so we're gonna try to, uh, see if we can take a look at the different programs that are being offered, uh, work with our PAC to be able to fund the program, um, and then have a program for the students that, uh, impacts bullying. We also want to reimagine how we communicate with staff, how we provide support and feedback around student behaviors. Uh, we as an administrative team want to be more, uh, more visible in the team meetings with the teachers, talking to the teachers, helping support them in the classroom, uh, be in the classroom more, uh, more walkthroughs, uh, just to be available um, and increase that communication back and forth, what works with different students, uh, different ideas, different techniques. Um, we want to increase all of that. We also want to regularly communicate, uh, student expectations to not just the students, but also to the staff and communicate any changes that follow or any changes, uh, to any of the rules or things that we really want to be emphasizing. We want to communicate that effectively and regularly, um, to the staff and to the students. School goal number two is, uh, a goal that, uh, is targeting our lowest-performing students. Now, that is a category in MCAS, uh, when they do, uh, when they do your target score, one of the groups that they look at is the lowest-performing students. And our lowest-performing students, um, improved last year. That group has a category, but it didn't meet target. And particularly in the ELA. So we wanted to focus our goal on ELA and this particular group of students. Ever last year, um, the average, uh, the average scaled score, um, that we wanted to have for those students was like a four eighty point, uh, a four eighty point seven, and we had a four eighty point six. So we improved, but we didn't meet the target. Well, next year, that target's gonna be four eighty point eight. So we want to make sure that we meet that with that group of students, um, and so that's a, that's a specific goal for us. Some of the data behind that, as you can see, uh, if you take a look at the exceeding expectations, uh, in twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three, it went from ten percent, dropped down to six percent, back up this year to ten percent. Uh, meeting expectations, we had, the previous three years, we had been at forty, uh, seven percent, then forty-eight percent, which is, uh, that's not really an increase because we lost so many out of the exceeding expectations, but then back up to forty-eight. So we're trending in the right direction, but it's still a focus area for us. We've made some changes already that we think are impacting our ELA scores, um, particularly, we have implemented, uh, uh, Witten Wisdom in grade six and grade seven, uh, our English program, and we think that's made a big difference. And we also have a robust intervention program, grade six through eight.
Luke, can you discuss the bottom? That actually goes back to the question that Jen brought up at a prior meeting about incorporating goal, uh, incorporating the programming that's available for EL students.
Yeah, um, this year, one of the, the biggest changes at the middle school this year is that, um, Anastasia Ziss is, is a full-time member at our school, and I don't know if you've met Anastasia. She does an incredible job with our EL students. I think we're gonna see that reflected in our EL scores. Um, she, uh, not only does a great job with the students, but she even comes in every Tuesday night and runs, uh, English, uh, an English class for parents as well, uh, incredibly well-attended. Uh, it is so well-attended that we had to figure out a way to provide babysitting services, uh, as well. But, uh, yeah, she does an incredible job. I think that our EL scores, um, are, are really gonna benefit from her presence. Um, she's been amazing in the building. Thank you.
And this blurb here is, is describes the type of programming that the Easton Public Schools has around, um, around English language, our English learner education program, which is an SEI model, which is Sheltered English Margin.
Which is gonna be in every school program, yes.
Yeah, so I think, um, I actually did, uh, you can take this separately. I did some, I did some research, kind of looking for examples, because it's not really well-defined
No.
what the requirement is with the, you know, in terms of having, uh, goals that address SEL.
A pro, a do, program description.
I, I, I think it said there has to be, I think, I think MGL says a goal. So our, um, Director of Curriculum at EL also reached out to her peer group and they have the programs in their improvement plans. Some of the ones that I saw, um, had, for example, specific, maybe, um, access testing, goal, you know, progress, um, things like that, or, or addressing, um, the, the current or past, uh, EL students, um, as a, as a group in MCAS or something. So, yeah, we can take it away, it's, it's, it's emerging and, I agree, there's not a lot of well-defined information out there on what is, is supposed to be.
Yeah, well, Luke and I talked about this in particular.
Yep.
Um, it fit nicely with the English
Yep.
um, goal because of, um, their development in English as well and background knowledge and all of that that Witten Wisdom brings. Um, so that's where we put the academic, this is a lot of the academic, um, goals describing the programming.
Even if it has program, there's no reason there can't be a goal. I just think we're gonna be in a better position to do that. This is literally the first year
Yeah.
that EMS has had an EL teacher there.
Yep.
Um, and so I would anticipate that there are gonna be goals in that area anyway, just by nature of a more robust program.
Yeah, yeah, and this is, this is, I, the information was, was very helpful and, and really good, right? As we, we talk about it, we budget it, you know, we know we have staff, but to get the details on really exactly what the approach is, um, is like, is really valuable and helpful, so I'm glad it was helpful, thank you.
Uh, this'll be a good year for us because, um, you know, it's gonna be the first year that we really have a, a, a real good sample of usable data for our EL population of students as well. Uh, because in the past, it, it, it's sort of been patchwork of, of, of. as well. Because in the past, it, it's sort of been patchwork of, of how we were supporting those students. But now with Anastasia, you know, we're really going to take a hard look at those scores. Then we'll have some nice baseline information. That's something that we can easily craft a goal around. In the action steps, we're going to review MCAS data. That's something that we traditionally do. We go through whatever the challenges that we have, whatever our achievements are. You know, there's different celebrations every year. It seems like, you know, this year we were celebrating math because we met pretty much all the targets. We still, you know, have some work to do in ELA in some pockets, but we do have a lot of hope, especially with the changing of the curriculum now that we're the seventh graders that have experienced Witten Wisdom in sixth grade and seventh grade. So, it is something that we, we are looking forward to next year. But we'll continue to review that data when they release it and then do basically a SWOT analysis on it and come up with the areas that we need to take a look at, whether it's through the curriculum lens, whether it's through the grade level lens or in the meetings with the teachers. We're also schedule and hold grade level data meetings where we discuss the MCAS scores as well as STAR 360 benchmark data that we have. We have benchmark data from this year that we can see how the kids did at three different points throughout the year. We'll share that out with the teachers for next year. We'll hold those meetings right in the beginning of the year. I think in September, we'll have those initial data meetings, share all the information, MCAS data, student growth scores, so the teachers have all of that information. We'll also synthesize the findings in a meaningful and collaborative way with data review teams and teachers, teachers in order to identify trends and design interventions accordingly. A lot of that gets done through those data meetings as well as our student intervention team process. We're also going to have a regular, regular meetings of student, the student intervention team to ensure students of greater level of risk academically or behaviorally or emotionally receiving the support and making progress. That's something that we really strengthened up this year and we will continue to do that at the next. We're going to increase opportunities for vertical conversations among staff to improve knowledge of the standards and promote effective differentiation across grade level. With the Just Words program, a reading intervention program, the intensive reading intervention program that we have, that is going to continue into its second year. We've, we had a screener at the beginning of the year. We place students in groups based on need and we've screened the kids already towards the very end of the school year. So, we'll have those groups identified and we'll know what groupings of students that we need to give extra reading support to before we even get to the point of day one of school. So, we're a little bit ahead of the game and, and that's a program that is continuing into year two. All, in addition to grade level core instruction, all students will have access to supplemental computerized programs that allow for independent practice in ELA such as iXL reading. We're also going to consistently implement the Eastern Public School D cap with identified interventions and accommodations for all students. That's something that we also want to get into the classrooms to make sure, not to, not to make sure, but to support the teachers in that they are using these things that are available for all students. And we want to be more aggressive, more visible in the classrooms trying to support and help teachers grow in that area as well.
How comfortable with D cap? Do you want to talk about that at all? I know what it is, but maybe for the public, yes. Luke, just the fact that the D cap, could you just talk a little bit about D cap for people that may not be familiar with what it is?
The D cap is, is, is a plan that is available. It's accommodations that can be made for any student regardless of disability, regardless of a 504 plan. It's something that any teacher can do for a student. If a student struggles to see the board, you can easily move the student up to the front room. You know, if a student need, you want to give a student additional time because you know the student is struggling, you know, with their organization or with, you know, with, with keeping up with the rest of the students on an assessment or something like that. That's something that you easily can do. So, it's a list of accommodations and supports for students that can be done without an educational plan, without a specific support plan. It's something that teachers can just do and do for the students based on their professional practice and what they see.
Great. It's best practices. It's universal accommodations for all students. We are finding that there are parents, students, even staff that are, are in a mindset sometimes that certain accommodations can only be done if a student is found to have a disability, be on an individualized learning plan or a 504 plan, and it really is not necessary. And so, this is updated by the team this year, this past school year, published this past school year. Now, we're going to make sure that the implementation is consistent across all grade levels, that parents are aware of the information and that they know what is available for students. They don't need to be, need to have any sort of disability or be on any kind of accommodation plan. These are universal accommodations for all students. I think Lauren's raising her hand, I believe?
Yep.
Oh, yes.
This is just more of a general question, probably across the district, but I have, but specifically to the middle school. How are D caps communicated teacher to teacher, year to year about an individual student? Is, is the accommodation, does the accommodation start all over again in the new school year? Or are they communicated through some? What?
That's a good question. I don't think we have a great system in, in place right now for communication from year to year, but you bring up a good point. I think that, you know, because our guidance counselor is trapped with each grade level and move with that group of students, you know, I think, and this is something I'll go back and I'll obviously check on, but I think our guidance counselors have a pretty good handle on the accommodations that different students are getting and how kids are being supported in the individual team classrooms. And so, that's something that easily could get shared from the guidance counselors. They'll be moving up to work with the next grade level of teams to talk about the students that they've known, you know, from sixth grade or that they're getting to know.
The idea of any accommodation is that you work off of the accommodation eventually. And so, these are, these are public strategies and universal accommodations. These are not written plans for students. A D cap is not a written plan for a student. This is what, this is why it's important to be published because especially from the middle school on, these are accommodations that all students should be familiar with. They should be able to advocate for. They should be able to ask for. They don't need to get it in sixth grade in order to get the accommodation in seventh grade. They may not need it in sixth grade. They may need it in seventh and vice versa. They may need it in math, but they don't need it in English. So, these are things that we want parents to know about, that they can identify that their, their students should ask for this. Students can ask for it. Teachers can offer it to students. It's a very fluid plan, which is a great advantage to it, is that it's best teaching and learning practices for all students at all times. And that's why the publication of it is really important. We want to make sure parents and students are well-versed in it as well. It's not a written plan that goes with a student.
Correct.
It doesn't have to be written. It can be day to day.
Right. It's, and it's all, it, anyone can find our district curriculum accommodation plan. That's what D cap stands for on our website, which provides examples of accommodations. There are accommodations that a teacher may think of that could be provided to all students that may not necessarily be listed on the D cap, but it is definitely something that it, it's for teachers' knowledge to know. You don't, I don't need to have a 504 for this student if they need breaks, if they need to leave the classroom to just stretch their legs or take a break. It's a universal accommodation, as Dr. Cabral said, and we don't track those accommodations because it may be needed only for a short period of time. It may be needed in one class, but not another. If I teach math in one grade, I'm, I might, a student may need it in my class, but then if Luke teaches math in the next grade, they may not need it in his class. So, it's really just about, or they, or those accommodations might be built in more fluently in, in Luke's class. So, it's, it's not something, we, we initially were looking at creating individualized accommodation plans, but that actually is not the purpose of D caps.
It's more limiting.
Right. And it, and it does exactly limit, you know, the, the opportunity for a child to grow out of the accommodation.
There are accommodations that any student or parent can expect at any time from any teacher.
Yes.
School goal three, it's a pretty old goal. UBD began many years ago, but there is an end in sight. So, the goal's been sort of toned down a little bit because of the new English program and, the new English program and we realigned social studies by adding civics in eighth grade. So, we've made some changes and that set those two departments back significantly. So, with, I've narrowed the goal to focus on finishing math and science UBD units this year. So, by 2025, all science and math units will be completed using Understanding by Design framework. Implementation of units will begin and feedback will be provided on the units by team members. The data source in current reality, I didn't go back many, many years with this, but curriculum leaders participated in UBD professional development to revisit units in 23. Staff continues work on UBD units, writing them during the summer and on allocated PD days. Grade six and seven implemented a new literacy program during the 23-24 school year. And we currently have common planning time and departmental time for teachers built into the schedule. So, that's something that we will utilize to make sure that there is unit work going on and we'll be getting into the team meetings to help facilitate that.
Those are administrative periods that could be used for unit writing based on the administration.
And the allocated PD days are days within the school year that teachers will collaborate during that, during that time. It's, it's additional time. It's not our professional development days. They are outside of those, those days.
And the action steps, we're going to identify departmental collaboration time, as I said, to create and refine the units, implement, completed units. Once they're done, we're going to start using them and get feedback for revision. We're going to provide feedback on unit implementation using a peer review process as well and evaluate the use of science of reading based on, based on the program and, and the grade eight ELA classrooms. I don't want to say it's science reading. That shouldn't have written wisdom.
No, it's, it's how we're utilizing the science of reading-based program to then bring it into grade eight.
All right. And then the last action strategy is a culturally responsive and trauma-informed training will be provided to team of staff members in a train the trainer model, which I touched on a little bit earlier. That's something that we're looking forward to this year with 30 staff members that can go through the training, that can then share out to their colleagues and hopefully that'll make a big impact on our students.
Is this a one-year goal or a two-year goal?
That one's a one.
Okay.
School goal number four, Eastern Middle School will enhance students' belonging by encouraging students to make their mark through positive contributions to both the school and the local community. By 2026, we will increase students' sense of belonging by 10% of an overall score of 85% as measured by the youth health risk survey. So, when the youth health risk survey came out this year, this is the first year that we've had this data point. So, I didn't have anything to reflect it back onto as far as data. But the data showed us that 25% of our seventh grade students and 30% of our eighth grade students felt like they didn't belong. They didn't fit in. And, you know, if that number was 5%, it would still be too much. We want all 100% of the kids to feel like they belong, feel like they fit in. So, this is something that's relatively new, but we're looking at sort of kicking off the year under the theme of we belong. And so, we have a few different events and some of this stuff is going to be sort of changing or evolving or even adding to even more than some of the action strategies that I go through. First, we're going to create a parent survey to find out if families would regularly use the late bus so students could participate in extracurricular activities. The reason why we're going to do that is because we're trying to sort of find out if there's a way that we can plan the different stops. Right now, the, the way the late bus used to work for us in the past can no longer work that way. It has to be very specific stops and there has to be a certain number of them. So, for us to be able to do that, we want to first reach out to the families to find out who needs the late bus and then where are those bus stops and see if we can come up with a plan that we can clearly identify these going to be late bus, the late bus stops for the year. And then it will provide more students' access to extracurricular activities, sports clubs, all different things after school. And that's something that we want to increase. We're always increasing clubs and activities. We want to establish a make your mark positive rewards program for students. We're already kicking around different ideas for that right now. We're going to hold a mural contest for the students at the very start of the year under the idea that the, the students are going to try to design a mural that will incorporate something that represents all of the students, all of the clubs, all of the extracurricular activities, all of their interests and community outreach as well. So, the kids will come up with the ideas for the mural and once we have those ideas, we'll pick a winner and then that mural will get painted by the art club just outside of our auditorium. The we belong theme is also going to be incorporated into the school year. We're talking about different things to start off the year with the individual teams. We're also going to give the teams ownership of that as well and have an expectation that they're going to do different things with their kids under that theme of we belong. We also want to create additional athletic opportunities for students as well. Right now at the middle school, you know, we, we don't have any offerings in the spring for any sports and that's something that we want to have offerings for both boys and girls in all three seasons and for all grades. And we're getting there, but that's still that one area that we want to impact. And we want to reestablish our community service-based field trips. That's something that we had always done and I thought it was one of the best things that we did at the middle school level was groups of kids and teams. And it didn't matter what they were doing. It could have been cleaning up the town pool. It could have been working at the children's museum or breaking out the play area. It could have been volunteering at one of the younger schools, field days or something like that. But we always had a different project that impacted maybe a local nursing home or different things. And around the pandemic, that just disappeared. And I think, you know, with that, we lost a little bit of our mojo at the middle school. We do want to bring back those community service field trips, one, one field trip per team per school year. So, they'll plan a regular field trip and a community service-based field trip. Each team will do that this year. We're going to continue to grow. This is the first year we've had the Eastern Middle School Cultural Festival. Our DEIA PAC solicited volunteers from parents that could share things that was wonderful about their culture. You know, it could have been rugby. It could have been dancing. It could have been, what do you call the?
Henna.
Henna.
Hebrew.
Yeah. And there was also cricket and different things. So, students really didn't have a choice this year because of the way it was scheduled. We had about 12 different activities. We divided the kids up into groups and we gave them, they, they were given randomly scheduled three classes that they went to and they got to experience three different cultures. And then the feedback that we got from the students was they wanted more. They were upset that they didn't get to go more things. So, that's something they do want to expand. It really went well this year. The kids were incredible. Our eighth grade students, they were so well-behaved. They were so respectful of the parents and they were so appreciative of the parents that came in and shared different elements of their own culture. And so, that's something that we'll now move forward, learning some lessons from this year, but trying to solicit more, more people to run these different little classes for the kids, maybe make the groups a little bit smaller and maybe make it so that the kids can go to four sections or five sections. So, 25-minute classes, kids really enjoyed it. It was a, it was an incredible event, one of many incredible events with our year-end activities. So, it was great.
Just before you go too far, can you go right there? Not to preempt anything that the school committee will say, but I would, I would, you know, your data point you're using for this is primarily the survey. And the survey question is, by design and for a reason, very generic. I would suggest at this 11th hour, I would suggest a really robust effort to get student voice in here. What do they mean by they don't belong? What are some suggestions that they have? And how can you give evidence that you have responded to the student voice part of this? I think that's going to take an effort to have some students involved in even coming up with questions, maybe on a survey that's just about a sense of belonging. What does that mean to them? What does a sense, how do they define sense of belonging? You've hit on a lot of different things here between, you know, six, seven different ways that we traditionally know students feel that they belong. I would like to feel confident that you're going to capture a lot of student input on what they mean by that and what they also suggest in addition to these. I think there's a reason you chose these. It's obvious that you have experience with middle school students and these are traditional ways of having people feel like they belong. But I would, I never want to presume that we know what students mean when they say they feel as though they belong. And so, I would love to, I would love to have some very specific And so I would love to, I would love to have some very specific action steps about capturing that student voice and measuring that in terms of what, what else you add here that comes from that.
Easily work into the already existing focus periods by just going in and talking to the kids. Take a focus period for a different group of kids and talk to them. You know, that's something that we could easily get student voice from, but it wouldn't be as, you know, wouldn't replicate just sending another survey. So that'd be a nice way to do it.
Or even a few ways to do it. But I would, I would really like to get their input. You know, students are, kids are developing very differently right now, and they, they may be looking for some things that we're not even identifying yet. And I think it's really important to get their voice on that.
Good idea. We can, we can pull on the student voice.
I also, I also think that you will find in the presentation of the Oliver Ames School Improvement Plan, you'll see a lot of student voice in there. And so working with Kelly on how she's capturing it at OA is definitely a great, a great suggestion as well.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Thank you, Luke. That was very, that was very good. I just have one, one question. Not question, really. I'm excited about those field trips coming back because that was always fun. Go having the kids do. And actually, we did some in-school ones too when we did Hunger Games and we did the food drive at the same time. That was amazing. The whole seventh-grade hallway was alive, was great. But you do, you have a lot going on here, and I wish you luck. And I appreciate all you and your staff do for our students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lauren, do you have, do you have any questions or comments? Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Yes, thank you. No, I don't have any specific questions. I, I appreciate all the work that was, all the work you and the committee did to put this together. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have, I'm just going to pause for one second, and I appreciate that you're, you're late. Let's see, where were we? So the, the first goal, all right, so the first goal you had. Yeah, yeah. So you had the, the creation of the parent presentation completed and continuing. Was that actually presented to parents or did you guys? I know we talked about it and then I think it was kind of revisited and refreshed.
It was, it was, it was in partnership with the district attorney's office. We had, we had a presentation this year. But I think that although we're still going to look for other bullying presentations, the presentation specifically to parents is what we're going to concentrate on during our back-to-school.
So we did have that as what we were going, that we were in, going to be in the creation of a parent session for, around bullying. With the transition of our director of DEIA taking over bullying. She began working on that, and that is going to be moved. We also had wonderful training that our assistant principals went through this past year. So she will be working on that with them for a, a presentation for next year.
We realized, once we had her lens on, that the bullying report, the policies all needed updating. That's what she worked on. You recently approved all of that. And so now she's going to work on the presentation for parents.
Okay, great, yeah. Because I was going to ask if it did happen, you know, how many people attended or whatever. So it's not. That has not happened, yes. So I think the approach of doing it at back-to-school nights is great because you'll get a big audience. Because unfortunately, there's, you know, the district does a wonderful job with bringing in a lot of good information that doesn't necessarily get to a broad audience.
Yeah, and we did, we did also combine with the high school for a, for a program that came in that, that, that we had and then the high school had. That there was also a night component for parents as well.
Yeah. I think I was at that. Not wildly attended, yeah. I know, it's frustrating. Yeah, okay. And then I think the same was on the, the anti-bullying assemblies and enrichment programs. I know that was an old goal. It's a continuing goal. Were, have we, have, have, I guess same question. Did any of the assemblies, you know, happen?
We had, we had, we had two major assemblies this year. One was specific to bullying. And one was, what was the name of the program?
Lucky Falls. Lucky Falls. It's, you don't know until you know.
Yeah, you don't know until you know me. It was a combination of those two things. One had the night component, it had some elements of bullying, but it wasn't completely about bullying. The partnership that we had with the program with the VA's office, that was completely about bullying. But it wasn't a dynamic program. So we're still searching for a dynamic program that really impacts students. That's.
Great, thank you.
And now Kelly Cavanaugh will present the School Improvement Plan on behalf of Oliver Ames.
Hi, everyone. Thank you. Okay, so I've seen you guys a lot this year. I'm really proud to say that, though, because it's because our community has worked really hard to assess what our needs are and what our kids' needs are and make changes to our schedules, to our program of studies, to our handbook in order to make sure that we're creating a community where each and every student can find personal growth and success academically. And a lot of the work we did in our strategic planning sessions this year, which were super helpful to me as a leader in this district, you're going to see in, in these goals, which I'm really excited about. So to start, let me just share with you, this, we had an outstanding school council this year who really supported me in deciding what these goals should look like. And I'd love to take a moment to just give a shout out to Victoria Taylor and Stella Zaccos. Joyce is an amazing student. She wasn't at the meeting, but at the meeting where we talked about these goals, they brought such a high level of student voice to this plan. And their desire to see data on the impact of our schedule change and things that we're doing to help students who are struggling was, it was just inspiring to all of us at the table. So I just want to give them a shout out. So the first goal, so I sat here watching the BA and the RO presentations and had, I'm going to name it, a little bit of jealousy of the amount of data that they have that helps inform their decisions in their curriculum and instruction design. And I wanted to bring more of that to the high school. So our goal is to implement a more robust data analyst, an, and system to analyze our data in terms of students' personal growth and academic achievement. So currently, we, we have made the assessment and the determination that our students would benefit from more time for enrichment and intervention during the day. And we've now gotten to the place where we can implement that next year. And we're able to look at our EMPASS data, and we're able to look at the progress that's monitored through our students who are referred to our student intervention team for progress, which they do an excellent job of tracking data over time and making adjustments to those intervention. But when it comes to more of that thirty-thousand-foot view, we, we have a few data points that help us, but I'd like to, to grow that and to look at how the different data points intersect and how we can identify students in need that we're not currently seeing just by looking at things like attendance, behavior, performance. So that, you can switch to the next slide. So there's several action steps. So one is to create this data collection system, which I shared with you. I have, we have two outstanding teacher interns this year who are getting their license as principals and assistant principals. And the three of us are taking a course through Harvard Graduate School called Data Wise, which is going to support us in creating this system. We're all taking it over the summer. Yes, and I, I was going to say, with Chrissy, and I, and I wouldn't say at her recommendation. And I'm first, through the first three weeks of sessions, and I've already learned so much about just how to help teachers approach how to use data effectively and from a real stance of just looking at the evidence and removing the judgment piece of it. Because we all come to work every day to do the best we can for our kids. That, that's not part of the data analysis. We make that assumption when we walk in the door every day. So the, so when we talked about the D cap before, D cap, our tier-one intervention. So those words are somewhat interchangeable here. And with the new schedule, we want to look at the tier-one and tier-two interventions that we're using during the school day and track the impact of them. So tier-two is what you're going to see in our H block. Tier-one is going to be through our multi-tiered systems of support programming that we as a whole district are going to be looking at through our strategic plan and making sure that every teacher has the tools and the knowledge they need to help students in front of them every day with any types of interventions that they might need from the D cap. And then we want to look at that, that looking at the, the data across different areas. So academic achievement, grades, attendance, behavior, and then skill development and how we can identify, like I said before, students at risks who, when you pull these data points together, you can, it's, it's easier to identify that, that there's, they could be struggling and we might not notice because a low grade in English might not make you think, oh, let's look at the discipline, let's look at the attendance, and then you put all of those together and realize that, that there's a level of need there that we could very easily provide for the student. And then the last is to create a committee to look at the new schedule and the way that we are providing enrichment and, and intervention for students during H block and then report back regularly throughout the year on what's working and where we can, we can improve and get better. So the second goal is about partnerships with home and school. Right now, most of the families at OA receive information about school policy procedures and updates in just a few ways. The first is our newsletter that goes out every month. The second is through e, through evening events that we've held for a long time, back-to-school night, parent-teacher conferences. And then the school counseling department does presentations for parents as they head into college and career and post-grad planning. And then we've had the DEI PAC that the middle school started this year as well. I think that it's really important that we increase the amount of home-to-school communication and connection and opportunities for parents to provide us with feedback for, with their experience. If you go to the next slide. So the first is just to increase more opportunities for families to share and engage in the community in with the administration. So I want to be able to offer in-person hybrid virtual meetings with school counselors, with the assistant principals, with me throughout the year. I have found that those one-on-one conversations or those small group conversations that I have with parents are often where I gain the most insight into what it's like to be an OA parent or guardian. And then we want to put a, a really intensive focus on ninth-grade parents and transfer student parents. So we already have well over ten in, uh, transfer students for next year, and it's only the middle of June. And right now, transfer parents, their main contact is the school counseling department, and that's it. So the parents in the DEIA council, who, and also the parents in the school council would love to provide like parent support, like a parent meet and greet, meet other parents, learn the unspoken norms about OA from other parents. So we want to start that next year. As well as, I, I want to just enter into all the things that we do with the lens of like, this person's never done this before, they've never done course enrollment before, they've never had to help their student plan what their, their four years are going to look like here and, and have that lens. Because I think we tend to fall into this mindset of, well, this is just the way things are done at OA, and I worry that we're losing valuable communication and contact with parents to help them navigate high school. And then I, the last is to develop a yearly survey for parents or guardians. So there are lots of different companies out there that have their questions available online. So with the help of the central office, as well as, I want to look at some of the, the data-wise stuff that I'm, that I'm learning, create a yearly parent and guardian feedback survey. So that's, that actually, okay. Make sure I didn't miss anything through my notes real quick. Nope, that's everything. Okay. So the last goal is continuing our work around college and career planning. And I'm happy to report, which I think you might, may have seen, is that we were able to offer three college credits to our French four class this year for the first time. So those in Mr. Sharkey's class. And a huge thank you to Mr. Sharkey for all the work he did to get, become an adjunct professor and offer those credits. But as I looked at the amount of opportunities we have for college and career exploration through career fairs and site visits, it's limited in capacity of what our students can, can attend. So working with our early college and career coordinator, Jen Tantello, who's doing an outstanding job this year, we're going to try to increase those opportunities for students even more so by an additional twenty-five percent. So there's, I think there's three or four in this one. If you could switch to the side. So continue to, uh, develop partnerships to get with colleges and universities to get that early college credit. Oh, yeah. Mr. Starr made an appearance in my presentation. That aderondite chair was beautiful. So next year, we already have two additional English courses and potentially a chemistry course. So continuing that work to get more and more teachers to be adjunct professors so our students can earn college credit from the courses that we teach right here. We, and that falls into number two. So just increase the number of teachers who are able to offer that, that court, that college credit for Oliver Ames courses. I mentioned this last year in my school improvement plan. So we sent us, us several teachers and school counselors through the MYCAP training. MYCAP stands for My Curriculum Academic Personal Growth Plan. I believe I have that right. And it's a training run through DESI. And what it does is it, the goal of this is to sup, the thirty-thousand-foot view is to support students in planning and academic and per, personal growth, four years of high school that leads to career and post-secondary option exploration, right? But it's, right now, we do that, but it's done through the school counseling department. MYCAP wants all teachers to understand what each grade level's going through, what they're learning from their school counselors in their sessions and what they're currently doing in those academic classes that could help them understand and inform their post-secondary planning. So we're going to start with ninth grade next year. And we're going to start a section of my weekly bulletin that goes out to staff that explains all of the different activities ninth graders are going through to help them plan what they want their four years to look like here. And that's both in academic classes, through their school counseling, sessions with their, their school counselor that are going to be done during H block. So that we start to have that mindset that we're all part of this planning for students. And, and then, and for opportunities, we're going to send opportunities out for advisory teachers to have these conversations with students. Oh, I learned you just did this in science class. Or I learned that your school counselor shared this with you. Here are some guiding questions that we're going to talk about as a group so that you guys are starting to understand how so many of the activities we do here are, are actually career and interest exploration. You might just not realize it. And also identify more in more ways that we can, we can do this. And then we'll move into tenth grade. And, and so that in four years, every single grade will have gone through the, the full, the MYCAP experience through their grade. Does that make sense? Yeah. Okay, all right. And then the last is to just increase the, and implement increased opportunities to participate in workshops and experiences that build those postgraduate skills and career exploration. So this year, we were able to send about fifty kids to a college fair. We sent about fifteen kids to a STEM career fair and then another twenty-four kids to a textile and fiber arts program. I would love to increase that to even more. More students be able to attend, whether we bring people in or we send them out. We have one of our students who's on our advisory school, the school committee advisory council, Franklin Chen. He's sending a survey out to students about what careers they want to explore in the hopes of bringing a career fair here with professionals here. So those are some of the things that we're working with students to build, and that's what that goal is hoping to meet. Okay. So questions, comments about high school?
Nancy?
Thank you very much. I think just continuing on with things that you've been doing is great. The college thing is wonderful. And I just, I just want to say that I feel like from August, whatever day we started till now, June, this year, I don't know, I think I'm just getting old. But this year went by so fast. There's so much going on. But I'm so happy that students are more involved. We have, you know, we have our student representatives. Marvel and the, all those kids and all the stuff, like the, the things that you did, the art. And the middle school had that too. And the civics presentation and the, just everything. I just, I commend both of you for giving us a chance to look at the kids. And the civics presentation and the just everything, I just I commend both of you for giving us a chance to look at the kids. In their real world. Thank you.
Lauren, do you have any questions or comments?
I think this is great, um I I love the uh the college credit. I forget what exactly it's called, but um the the course offerings that were just sent out. For next year. In it's uh following years, are they gonna be sent out sooner to families so they have more time to. Review the courses and the deadlines, because I know some of it is after.
Yeah, no, that's a that's a great point, no, something I did meant mean to mention is that's one of the areas I think that we could really better support families. If you don't understand the course selection process and you don't understand the override process, if your child wants to take a different level than what was recommended. Um then then you're unable to support your student in making those choices and working with their teachers to make decisions on what best is for that, what is the best balance of. Course load for them to take in the next year, so we do currently have um. Part of that second goal, we do a some of these things we currently have, but it's another night out for parents and I know that that's hard, I'm a working mom too. So I'm trying to find ways to infuse that into back to school night and into other things that we already do. Um to make sure that, I mean, the back to school night, we started the assembly before back to school night for the first time last year. And we had like over three hundred parents in the auditorium, so that's like key time for me to. Hone in on really important things for them to know, even if it's a few months away, um so that they can start looking for it. The program of studies process will start earlier next year than it did this year. As well, I think that's what you're asking, so so it'll there'll be a little bit more time for um the course selection process.
Program of studies, yes, but I'm also referring to the um the college credit.
Yes, I know, making sure that families know which courses have college credit attached to them?
No.
Okay.
The one, yeah, yes, yes, the one that you can take up outside with that are affiliated with the universities.
Yes.
The non-concurrent ones, I think.
The the non-concurrent, yeah, we don't have any of those currently, we're working with um our consortium to.
Okay.
Get a catalog of those for next year, and once we have that, I'll send it out. Any updates that I do have on that, Jen Tantillo always puts into my monthly newsletter, she has like a two-page section of my monthly newsletter and it's in there.
Okay.
So like, for example, Boston Architectural College had a summer program, you could earn one credit, that was in that newsletter this year.
Yeah, that's what I'm referring to.
That's what you're referring to, got it, yep. Yes, and any feedback and parents who are out there listening, like uh whatever I can do to help get information to you in a way that's. Digestible and easy to read and understandable, I'm I'm please give me a call or shoot me an email because. I know that those newsletters can be long and it's hard to read through all of them, so um I appreciate the feedback if you have any.
You're doing a great job, thank you.
I agree with Lauren, um uh I I think this is great, um I I. I feel like, you know, you're kind of among the schools in a sort of an enviable position where. You don't have to boil the ocean, you know, you 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 you're able to focus on things that will still be impactful, but are are fairly, you know, they they. There's a lot of work, but they it they seem very contained and and doable, so um so I, you you know, ad admire your ability to kind of hone in. And and do that and define that, uh because I I reading through was thinking like, yes, like this is, it's a lot, but very um very concrete and and. You know, I fully expect that these are things that, you know, will have check marks next to them and then we can measure and see what was successful and. And um and move forward, so um and then just um uh you know, tangential feedback.
Yes.
Um so um Zach had attended. The it was like a a local area, kind of a tr- a career in trades.
Yep.
Loved it, it was a great day.
Yes.
But um I think he he felt, and I don't know what gr- if that was open to.
That was the one I shared with you that was like only fif- only had room for fifteen kids, the STEM curve, it was like a s- called the STEM career for, but it was really about trades. And it was run by New England Machine.
Yeah, it was, yeah, yeah, it was offsite.
Yep.
Um yeah, so he he felt like that would have been um probably more impactful for younger students and probably more helpful to. Because they've already, most of the kids going have already, they've they've got their plans.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, so a lot of the kids who are college bound or have already decided to go into, you know, whatever. They're not necessarily going to be the pool, they're not at a point where they would be looking to apply necessarily for a job where. Maybe a student who is a sophomore or a junior who's kind of landed at OA and then decided halfway through like, oh, maybe I should have, you know, maybe and I I. I have multiple of my children got halfway through OA and thought, oh, I should have gone to the regional school, you know. You know, once they took one kind of hands-on tech class, really re- realized that that was a great fit for them and they thrived. Um so if you get a student, if you can introduce that to maybe students who are a little earlier.
Yeah.
It may become something that they do seriously consider as a career path versus whatever it is that they're doing. So anyway, that was just some 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 student feedback then.
No, I appreciate that, and my my wheels are turning now, like how can I expose ninth graders to our shops early? Do you know what I mean?
Yep.
Um because they don't have it in their schedule often to take those electives right away.
Right, yeah, and you know, given the the nature of the shops and that, you know, there's dangerous equipment and you need a certain level of maturity.
Right.
You know, it it's well suited for the older students, but I think, yeah, to get at least that introduction or to, you know, to have students to be able to. Get out for a day and meet people in the field and, you know, because I'm thinking, you know, those im- a lot of those folks there were, they were ready to, you know, here's like, we're taking applications, you know. And it's just, at least our students who attended are probably not the ones who are gonna actually. Be in a position to take that application and go with it, it's certainly, you know, I know it was it was a multi-area things, there were lots of other students there, but. Um yeah, it it might be, it might, that might be a way to introduce without, you know, trying to cram classes into schedule at at two-yearly time.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it was it was, I I you know, I heard, I did hear great feedback, um that it was, you know, it was an interesting, interesting day. They provided lots of sandwiches apparently.
Feeding teenagers, always.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kelly.
Find a flattering angle. That's not it.
How about, oh, there we go, with Andrea.
Great, okay, alright, so um so after seeing those wonderful school improvement plans, we need to vote to approve them. Um so would somebody like to make a motion to approve the Easton Middle School school improvement plan?
So move DeLuca.
And can I get a second?
Second, Loomis.
Roll call vote.
DeLuca, yes.
Starr, yes?
L- Loomis, yes.
Okay, and can I get a motion to approve the Oliver Ames School Improvement Plan?
So move Loomis.
Second, DeLuca.
Roll call vote.
DeLuca, yes.
Starr, yes?
Loomis, yes.
Great, thank you, so next up is a discussion of the Budget Transfer Policy, DBJ, this is the first reading, Dr. Cabral?
Thank you, I'm joined by Andrea Starchevsky, our Director of Finance, and we uh have been. Looking at ways to present information to the school committee in terms of our quarterly updates on budgets. The school committee has been extremely helpful this year in uh helping us to understand what are, what would be helpful to you, what are you looking for, what kind of a structure are you looking for? Of course, obviously, we're gonna provide anything you want, everything is completely transparent, but we want to make sure that it is useful for you, it's consumable. You are uh knowing what you're looking at regularly and you've helped us tease that out this year and we really appreciate it. In looking at policies, we want to make sure that they memorialize what we're trying to do. If you look at the small little packet that Andrea gave you this evening, it starts with. File DBJ, which is the School Committee of Easton's Current Policy for Budget Transfer Authority. If you take a moment to read this, you can see that it's very short, this is basically the minimum s- the minimum statement from MASC. The suggested policies for MASC Association of School Committees. And it says, in keeping with the need for periodic reconciliation of the school department's budget, the school committee. Will consider requests for transfers of funds as they are recommended by the superintendent. That's basically it, it doesn't give us any parameters in terms of what cost centers are we looking at? Are there any limits to transfers, uh is there a timeline? Should that be quarterly, is that the end of the year, is that the beginning of the year? And so what we would like to do right now is Andrea's done some research, she's given some sample districts, we're not gonna name the districts. But we will talk about them in the order that they were given to you. Uh to give you an idea of a cross-section of what she's found other districts have. In order to give context to that, she also reached out to the administrators there and asked them, well, what do you mean by this? And you say cost center, but what cost center do you use? And so she's gonna review the specifics for each of the districts that she's choosing, she did reach out to more, but these are the ones that were different, others were very similar to these. So we then have a very soft recommendation for today, just because it's a first reading and we're missing a couple of members. A very soft recommendations of areas that we would like you to look at, but we also talked about having a a workshop to. Really dive into the the basics of finance of the school department. Um and as deep as the committee would like to go, of course, we have some new members and we have some changes, we've had some changes in. What the Department of Education required as the cost centers, um we've. Have a new business department, and so we've changed how we're running things in the business department, you know, putting new controls on things, and so we think that um. Aside from the fact that it's policy that you read everything twice, we would like to introduce this to you, see what the benchmark is.
Yep.
Give you some soft considerations, have a workshop where we can explain that to you and you can get a better understanding, well, what are all the possible cost centers? Yes, you're recommending maybe this one, but what are all of them, we want to make a a an informed choice about what we're getting regularly. And then after that workshop, circle back once, maybe even two more readings, to try to get this to be um. Not too restrictive, that we're not able to pay our bills in a timely manner.
Yep.
But to make sure you're getting all the information and this, we don't feel is is appropriately capturing that in any way that's useful for the public or the school committee. So we would like to put a little bit more uh into that, so in framing that, Andrea is gonna go over uh the samples that she brought for you.
Thank you, good evening, uh so for the first example within the handout, I just want to draw to your attention some of the items that Dr. Cabral just had mentioned. So in this particular example, cost centers is described in the first paragraph for uh one of the parameters. Uh when speaking with the contact at this district, uh their cost centers are defined as transfers between their special services department and their general education department. Um they do look at line-by-line item detail and it's not specified by DESI code for this particular district. Uh there's no defined timeline, however, items are presented uh when the contact considers them material periodically, but that's not defined in this policy. And there's also a one-year-end like kind of cleanup meeting that's presented to their school committee. Uh which also is not defined in this policy, um they are working on updating the policy, just as an FYI. Uh but just to give you an example of just some of the different things that we're considering that may or may not go into our own uh policy. And there is language that's included in here and also in, I think, the third uh or next example. That third paragraph that says all requests are transfers between cost centers as approved during the annual budget deliberation. Must be submitted to the school committee for approval as part of the Director of Business and Finances Quarterly Report at the business meetings of the school committee. Now, when trying to interpret this, it's a little bit difficult language. Um and I believe it's suggesting that as part of the annual budget setting. Where or there this particular district is presenting some of those transfers that need to be approved by the school committee, um but you'll see this again in one of the other policies. Uh so I'm just pointing out some um common areas and things to consider, um and this is just one of those examples. So for the next example, uh so this particular policy, I have not spoken to the contact at the district. Uh but it does differ from the other policies within your handout as it does include a percentage threshold to abide by. So that is one of the differentiating factors here, and it is uh referencing line item transfers, it's not um. Uh speaking of cost centers and those line item transfers, but the second sentence uh does apply a percentage across cost centers. And we don't have a definition of what this district defines as a cost center, um so it could vary. Uh they also have included language related to revenue, should additional revenue materialize during a budget year, which was not anticipated at the start of the year. A plan for spending said funds will be developed, now, I find that kind of odd for a school district, just because. A majority of our revenue is related to state funding, that's pretty much set at the beginning of a time, at the beginning of the school year. Um or allocated by the town, uh what this may be describing could be some of our uh grant-related revenues. Um but once again, that additional revenue, that's typically structured. Um and we would plan that out as we are actually applying for the grant, for what those funds will be spent on in advance. Um so I don't know what the intent is here, and maybe there is just something unique at this district as to why they've included that language.
Grants particularly, well, the other possibility are donations, but you would you accept anything of some anyway, so you would be aware of those. In terms of grants, they're extremely prescribed, uh there isn't a lot of discretion in how they can be used and. They don't necessar- and we don't put them into operating lines of the budget, so we're we're kind of perplexed by that one, but. It's something to consider if we think of something else that we're not thinking of, that would be additional materializing revenue.
Yeah, how would something like um like the districts that received uh that were assigned.
SOA funds.
New students, mi- migrant students, and you know, they came with uh X amount per day, per student, is that?
They're actually putting that, so. That was uh just over a hundred dollars a day per student. In the districts that had emergency assistance centers, that was originally done as a payment uh quarterly. It's now being incorporated into the Chapter Seventy Funds, so that would actually come through the town in the Chapter Seventy Funds at the beginning of the year, as Andrea noted. I don't know that they're gonna change that, uh my most recent communication with them, actually, uh last week. Indicated that they were, or Monday, indicated that they were um. Really thinking of keeping it in the Chapter Seventy Funds.
Yep, yeah, okay, but that could be maybe something that would be an example maybe of unanticipated. Revenue, right, because it's not like, I understand like for for grants, right, it's very like this, the funding like that. Is really just comes into the operating budget and obviously is getting used because you're providing a whole bunch more services, but.
Yes.
I could see where something like this item.
Right, the intention, it comes out to about eighteen, nineteen thousand dollars a student.
Yeah.
So the intention is to be the per pupil expenditure.
Right.
And that would just be divided the way.
The rest of the budget.
The rest of the budget is in terms of the cost centers, administration, technology, textbooks and so on, so it wouldn't be in one bucket. Where you just pay for the teachers of that student, those students in, because you would. You wouldn't have a class of newcomers.
Right.
They would be across the district, so it wouldn't actually be a line.
Yep, but I could see where where a district would want confirmation from the committee that we're just going to, this is just going to be spent pro rata. You know, like any other per pupil spending, you know what I mean, like I I anyway, just just trying to think of some of the unusual things that.
Yeah, but we we tried to think of.
Yeah.
What would be materialized revenue, because we would want to tap into that. but we weren't, we don't know what that is.
Those are my comments on that, that page. So moving on, unless there are any questions, on to the next example. So for this example, cost centers are also described, but not defined. And then the same language in the third paragraph exists as the first example. When speaking with this particular contact, transfers are presented first at the finance subcommittee, because they have a finance subcommittee in this particular district. And the cost centers are defined line by line. It's not by DESI code for the way that they're presenting that to the different boards that they're reviewing the transfers with. Internal, there is an internal threshold, but it's not listed in the policy. And this contact is also in the process of reviewing and updating their, their policy or their, yeah, their policy. So as far as just common language we're seeing, I think, as Dr. Cabral brought up, cost center, whether we want to have a timeframe defined for presentation or a threshold to abide by are all up for discussion. I did speak with some other contacts through my Masbo listserv organization. One of the other districts said that they do provide information line by line, and the other district presents by DESI code as far as when asking about cost centers and their definition. I just asked a couple of questions to get some clarity, because it seems like each district is doing something a little bit different than the other. Just to have more examples of what is actually happening out there.
So in terms of just some soft recommendations, we feel as though we should, we would like to define what our cost centers are going to be. I think we should look at the Department of Ed cost centers first, only because that is how a lot of the reporting you're going to get is going to be in that format. We can break out any cost center to any number of lines you want at any time. But just for a regular revisit of what you're looking at, so you're, you're not constantly looking at different, different representations of the same information. We want to try to keep that consistent for you. There are almost two hundred lines in the operating budget of discrete lines of information. There are fifty-one DESI cost centers. And so the other sort of added benefit, if I'm going to put on my teacher lens a little bit, is that I think it would be good for the school committee to become, maybe not fluent, but even, but more familiar with what the DESI cost centers are and what they include and what they don't include. And there is a manual that is used that will name the number of the cost center. It will name what the line is. And then it will name what DESI considers goes under that cost center. And I think that talking about that on a regular basis in terms of updates, in terms of summation reports, in terms of asking questions, breaking out lines, I think would be like an embedded professional development in being more fluent in what those are. So that's a soft recommendation, but we can look at whatever is available and you can make your decision from there. We also think it would be a good idea to have a limit. You know, do you want, and again, this is why we think this is important after a workshop. Are you looking to have approval of a cost center? For example, would be Blanch Ames. Are you looking if Blanch Ames wants to move library texts to ELA consumables? They want to move four hundred dollars from one line to another. Do you want to approve that before we do that? What we don't want to do, of course, is have any lines going into arrears if people need to, to post POs, purchase orders or order materials in order to keep things functioning, as long as it stays within the cost center, right? The bottom line budget for that school. We also are, which we want to talk about in the presentation, we're also in the process, as we said, of making some shifts and changes. We've taken you through the process that we have been training the staff on distributing the ownership of their budgets and understanding what they're for and understanding how to project lines in the future. And we're still fine tuning some of that. But what would be a reasonable limit? What would you want to know? So we, we have information on what DESI recommends. We have information on what other districts have as a possibility, and we can talk about all those. So cost centers, limit, and a timeline. We don't feel comfortable with all of it being an autopsy at the end of the year. We think that it's important, especially if the limit is like a procurement limit of twenty-five thousand or something like that. We're going to have a contract on that. We'll know in advance if we're doing this quarterly. We're going to know on a month-by-month basis if we have that. So we'll have that, all of that information for you as opposed to waiting till the end of the year. Now, if you want to have a reconciling of the whole year and we do it line by line, what was moved and why, absolutely, we can do that. But we want to show you the whole perspective, what's available, what kind of data and information we have, and then have you determine what would be the usefulness of it for you. So that's why those are just soft buckets that we would like you to consider to be a bit more descriptive in the policy.
That sounds great. Lauren, do you have any, any feedback or questions?
I don't have anything.
All right. All right, this is great. Thank you for doing, doing the recon on this. It's very helpful to see some examples pulled together. And I did send a request out to the team to get general availability over the next few weeks, just to get a sense for if anybody's on vacation, et cetera. And then we'll, we'll get a workshop scheduled soon, so. And we look, I, I know, you know, I do this forum, so I love it, but and Nancy's a math teacher, so she likes it too. But I, I know that, you know, other committee members have been looking forward to better understanding all the processes and controls. And so we really appreciate, you know, one, your ability to pull all this together and, and, you know, kind of train and explain and all of that. It's just, it's really great stuff, and I think will help all of us with making sure that we're all doing what we're supposed to be doing.
We're looking forward to it. We were talking today about how exciting it is.
I love workshops.
Yeah, it's very exciting to be able to get your direct feedback on this and not just making recommendations to you, but what is useful for you, for your purposes, for the district, for the public. So we're excited to have that engagement, so we, we appreciate your investment in this.
All good.
If I can just add, since Andrea has come on board, we all have been learning a lot about our budget. And where I know, it's, I know that I'm extremely appreciative of her leadership in this area, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea.
All right. Thank you very much. Next up is a vote to approve the retainer agreement with Stoneman, Chandler, and Miller LLP. And I'll let, I'll let Dr. Cabral explain, but I don't think we'll be voting tonight, so.
Yeah, I wouldn't recommend a vote tonight only because we received a proposal for a retainer. I will tell you that our current retainer is eighty thousand dollars a year. It includes regular course of business, which, for example, would be school committee contacting them for advice, of course, they're your attorney firm. It would be us consulting them for any legal questions, legal procedures, advice, reviewing documentation before we provide it to the school committee for any kind of approval, any negotiations with any bargaining unit. What it doesn't include is any litigation or hearings or consultations. For example, if we have something, a case that might be either unemployment or disability or something of that nature where it goes through our insurance company and we use the town's appointed attorneys for that. If they've been involved or if they have background knowledge, it's very useful for them to provide documentation that they compiled while we were working on the case and so forth. Those things are not included. What has happened traditionally in that the, I think the retainer's only gone up twice since I've been here that I remember, it is, we, we truly get a firm when we're getting this retainer. They have specialists in certain areas. We work with one of the partners for all of our negotiations and labor issues. We work with another for special education issues. We work with another for student issues. We work with another. So they all have a specialty and we, there's a great benefit from that for obvious reasons. What they do, of course, as attorneys do, is they do billable hours. And so even though we have a retainer, of course, they keep data on how many billable hours is that coming out to? And for the last four years, I'm not providing that yet because it's part of the negotiation. For the last four years, we've gone over the retainer one year significantly, and we went under slightly in one year. And so they're proposing a different model. They're, the way they do their billable hours is by a set fee. So they are raising their fee as an organization to a different price that's been proposed, as well as they, they're offering to keep the retainer, but then after a certain amount of billable hours with a little grace period, then doing the per hour rate. So that would be very different for us. We are in the process, I would like to put in an executive session opportunity for me to present you with some ideas of how we might be able to work with them. It is a three-year contract going forward, and so we have some ideas we'd like to share. I just wanted to let you know what that was for. It's just a regular course of the contract being up. That's why it's coming up for a conversation. This contract would take us through June thirtieth, 2027. And so we'd like to put together some ideas for you and then work with our legal team to hopefully come up with something that is mutually agreeable at a future meeting.
So then we will, we will not vote on that today and we'll have further discussion. Okay, all right. Thank you. Let's see, next up is the schedule of payments. And I was out of town for a couple of weeks, but my records are showing that we have not approved any warrants in the past couple of weeks. All right, yeah, I figured we're getting, we're getting close to the fiscal year end. We'll get a flurry of them coming up. All right, well, we will be ready to review. Okay, let's see, so we, next up is our student representative update. I don't believe we have Marvel here tonight, which is not a surprise since school is out. She's taking some well-deserved vacation. Public comment, we have none tonight, so superintendent notes.
So I just wanted to provide an update. At our last meeting, you had given, the school committee had voted to give permission to offer above step seven, if necessary, I want, with an update at this meeting. I wanted to update you that one person was offered step nine. One was offered step fourteen. They were two very hard-to-fill positions that already had multiple declines. And, excuse me, one of those, excuse me, still has declined. The contract is very specific in that, and I told you that I would be following this, this way, that we are able to, or that I am authorized to offer. Well, it depends. It's, it's very prescriptive in the contract. If they had experience more than five years ago, but they've, they've been out of education, they get half of a year credit for each year. If they've been continuously serving, they get a year of credit for each year. And there are, there is a different climate right now. And people are in other districts. Their contract allows the superintendent to be even more liberal than that. So we did have a couple of candidates. These are the same two positions, but multiple candidates so far, that are able to negotiate for higher rates in different districts based on how they operate. So we have had several declines so far. And we had an interview today where I offered top step to a very hard-to-fill position that we have already missed several candidates on. And that candidate is going to let us know on Monday. That one seemed to be comparable to where they're coming from, and so I'm very hopeful about that. The other one is just a candidate looking for something that I'm not authorized to offer. In the contract, it has to go by years of service. So that's the update. So we potentially have one that will be after step seven. And any, we have been hiring other people and they've all been under that. And actually, a couple of surprises have been well under that. There were, was a hard-to-fill position that came in well under that. That was a, a new, but very promising and exciting candidate, and we're very, very happy to have them join us. So that's the update. I would like to continue that, especially since barring workshops, our next meeting isn't until the end of July. We intend to do a lot of hiring between now and then. And I hope to be able to continue doing that at the, the will of the school committee, if we can continue that. If I find, of course, that there is any uptick, more than one or two people, I will make sure that, you know, maybe we call a meeting. But this was, the only one that I'm kind of confident about is the one that happened today.
All right. Any other updates this week? Okay. Next up, assistant superintendent notes.
We are really excited. We are planning for the Summer Enrichment Academy and the Math Academy in K through eight, actually, K through ten, sorry, and our credit recovery program at the high school. We have, we will be servicing this summer two hundred fifteen students, which is really remarkable.
Not including ESY?
Not including ESY, correct. ESY is our extended year program for students that, that require it through their individualized education plans. So we're really excited about that. So the first day for grades six through eight will be on July eighth. And the first day for K through twelve, excluding six through eight, will be on July ninth. So we're looking forward to that. Starting, transportation notification will be sent out, will be sent out shortly. And just today, our K through five staff had their orientation. I was able to go and attend with Meg St. Martin and Rita Pastore, who are our coordinators. And the teachers are so excited. We have some returning from previous years that aren't necessarily teachers within the Easton Public Schools. And they're really excited about all the opportunities and the project-based learning that will happen.
Excellent.
That's all I have.
All right. Great. School committee notes, Nancy?
I have nothing. I'm glad to be back.
We're glad that you're here.
Thank you.
Lauren, do you have anything?
I have two little things. Before the end of the school year, I went to the R O Band and Orchestra Concert, and it was wonderful. They did a really great job. And I also was able to go to the R O Lip Sync Contest or Final Showcase, which was probably the cutest thing I've ever seen in my whole life. I was like, I loved the music. I was dancing and singing along, and it was just great.
Yeah, a lot of our generation, right, Lauren? A lot of our generation's songs.
Yes, it was awesome. They did a really great job. And the, the eighth grade civics project, we've already met, right? Since then? Yes, we did.
Yes.
Okay, so I think that's it.
All right. Great, thank you. I just have the CPAC requested that we share out that they have an open board position. So they are looking for applicants for the vice chair. So this is to, to replace Marcy, who has served as a CPAC. So CPAC, just for our audience, Special Education Parent Advisory Council. Outgoing, outgoing vice chair, Marcy Schroder, has served on the CPAC for ten years. Fabulous, fabulous contributor to the district as a whole and to the special education community in particular. So S T O N, CPAC, S E P A C, at Gmail. And the vice chair presides at meetings. If the chair is absent, assists the chair as appropriate to perform responsibilities on request, works with other board members to conduct forums, presentations, identify speakers, and organize and/or participate in specialized district-wide or school programs, such as ability awareness. and organize and/or participate in specialized district-wide or school programs such as ability awareness, the Special Olympics, and other similar programs and other duties as needed. So it's a great opportunity for a leadership role within the district that focuses specifically on special education. They work very closely with, with parents and with school leadership. And I, I don't believe that the role includes the opportunity to wear the tiger costume at the Special Olympics. I believe, I believe Marcy is keeping that, so. But anyway, eastoncpac@gmail.com for anybody who is interested in applying. They would love to hear from you, tell you more about it. And that's it. School year ended. Yay.
Yes.
We made it through. Fiscal year is, year end is coming upon us. So we'll get, get all the rest of the warrants in order and move on. All right. Next up, for anybody following along at home and reading our agenda, we did have some technical difficulty earlier in the meeting tonight. So with that, we had voted to move our executive session up while ECAT was working on getting the audio stream working. So we are now on to item fifteen on our agenda, which is a vote to approve the minutes. So we can start with the regular meeting minutes from June fifth. So any questions, comments, or edits on the meeting minutes from June fifth? Hearing none? Okay. I will make a motion to approve the minutes from the June fifth, twenty twenty-four meeting. Can I get a second?
DeLuca, second.
Roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Star, yes?
Loomis, yes.
Okay. Great. And then next up, we have executive session meeting minutes from May sixth, twenty-third, twenty-eighth, and June fifth. So let's take the sixth, the twenty-third, and the twenty-eighth. Those were held for tonight's executive session, but where we don't have all members present, we will, we are not, we're going to hold those over until a future executive session when all meeting, all members can be present. So can I get a vote then to continue to hold the May sixth, twenty-third, and twenty-eighth for, executive session meeting minutes for discussion in a future executive session?
So move Loomis.
Second, DeLuca.
Roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Star, yes?
Loomis, yes.
Okay. And then finally, the executive session meeting minutes from June sixth. Before we vote to approve or not approve, release or not release, does anybody have any, anything that you would like to hold for discussion in a future executive session?
I don't, but it's almost like we have to approve May sixth before we can approve this.
Um.
Maybe?
No, I think we, I don't know.
So we can just put these through then?
Yeah. I think we can put these through. It just, yeah, it just acknowledges that we discussed them and decided that we still needed more input from other members. So now I, I feel bad that we keep pushing this forward, but, you know, we've, we're doing what we can with who we have. So from week to week. Okay. So, so if these, all right. So if we're good with, if nobody feels like these need to be discussed in an executive session, then we can approve and release or approve and not release at this time? Does anybody looking at these feel that they should not be released at this time? If, if approved?
I think it can be released.
This one, right? June sixth?
June sixth.
Okay. June fifth.
June fifth, sorry. Yes.
Yes. Where we just had that quick exec session. Yeah. Okay. All right. Then I will make a motion then to approve and release the executive session minutes from June fifth, twenty twenty-four. Can I get a second?
Second, Loomis.
Okay. And roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Star, yes?
Loomis, yes.
Okay. Great. All right. So I should have checked this earlier. Our next meeting is July twenty-fifth. Yes. Okay. So our next meeting, July twenty-fifth at six P M. And with that, would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
So move DeLuca.
Go ahead.
Did you mention the select board meeting?
Oh, yeah.
Yes. Thank you. Yes.
Monday.
Yes. So the school committee is joining the select board meeting this Monday, June twenty-fourth. And this is to discuss the formation of a working group to take a deep dive into the operating budgets across town departments. So thank you, Lauren, for that reminder. Okay. So would you, want to remake the motion to adjourn?
Sure. Make a motion, we adjourn.
Okay. And can I get a second?
Second, Loomis.
All right. Roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Star, yes?
Loomis, yes.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.
Thank you.